Testing, one, two, testing.
Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year to everybody. Before we begin, we're going to welcome back our newly re-elected council members. Councilmember Matt Lehman and Jay Whiting were re-elected this fall and they have gone through their swearing-in process and so, welcome. Moving ahead then.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you hear me now? Can they hear now? Is there any problem hearing, gentlemen?
Yeah, we can't hear muted.
Not muted.
I heard him.
Okay, she's coming back on now.
Okay, I think I'm here.
Can you hear us, Councilor Contreras?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll proceed then.
I'm here.
We'll proceed. Item number one, roll call. Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Lehman.
Present.
Councilor Whiting.
Here.
Councilor Brennan.
Here.
Councilor Contreras.
Here.
And Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving ahead to item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight's agenda, unfortunately, we had one oversight where we did not include the recess for Economic Development Authority meeting and the reconvenement of the city council meeting. So, I've checked with the city attorney. It is permissible to go ahead and ask, add 6.1 as recess for Economic Development Authority meeting and 6.2 reconvene.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And, Councilor Whiting?
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
A second?
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Lehman.
Aye.
Councilor Whiting.
Aye.
Councilor Brennan.
Aye.
Councilor Contreras. Councilor Contreras, can you unmute, please?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The modified agenda has been approved. Moving ahead then to item number four, consent agenda before us. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Thank you very much. Counselors? Councilor Lehman?
Moving to consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. Further discussion? If not, before, I have a motion, a second, before we would vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 5/1/2021, 4A1 adopts Resolution R2021. And that should be Tac 001, Designating Individuals to Perform Certain Banking Transactions. 4A2 designates the Shakopee Valley News as the official newspaper for the City of Shakopee in 2021 and designates the city website, which is www.shakopee mn.gov, as the official notice and advertisement venue for transportation project bids in 2021. 4A3 approves the city council meeting minutes for December 15th of 2020. 4A4 approves a pawnbroker precious metal secondhand dealer employee license for Michael Dwinell. 4A5 approves a taxicab business license for TNT Taxi. 4A6 adopts Resolution 2021 Tac 003, which renews the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. 4B1 adopts Resolution 2021 Tac 002, which approves the 2021 Southwest Metro Drug Task Force Grant Agreement. 4C1 approves the purchases of the following. A 2021 Ford Explorer LT All-Wheel Drive from Ford Hibbing for $35,947.30. Four 2021 Ford Utility Police Interceptors All-Wheel Drive from Tinboard Ford and set up from Emergency Automotive Technologies Incorporated for a total of $190,961.76. A 2021 Mack Truck from Nuss Truck and Equipment with a 2,000 gallon water tank from Step Manufacturing for a total of $189,615. Two 2021 Mack Trucks from Nuss Truck and Equipment with vehicle equipment from Towmaster Truck Equipment for $471,198. And declares equipment vehicles as surplus and authorizes their sale or disposal. 4C2 adopts Resolution R2021 Tac 004, which accepts the donation of 11 memorial benches for Lyons Park. And 4C3 approves the utility facilities easement agreement as an approved condition for the Arison Apartments Development for Lot 2, Block 2, Powers Second Edition located at 1620 Lucetano Street.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Lehman.
Aye.
Councilor Whiting.
Aye.
Councilor Brennan.
Aye.
Councilor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Consent agenda's been approved. Thank you very much. Moving ahead now to item number five. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. So, my name is Alasia Soslov and I'm a Shakopee resident and I'm a parent of a figure skating child. I was the one who sent you and the councilor's email regarding the Shakopee Ice Arena. So, it sounded like you received the email and you took the action because Jay called me back. He left me a message. So, I didn't call back Jay because I wanted to meet all of you in person and to bring my attention to your concerns in person. So, I have an eight-year-old daughter who has been skating her whole life since she turned four and she has been doing that at the Shakopee Ice Arena. The environment had always been relaxing, enjoyable, and pleasant at affordable rates until recently. And recently, I learned that the Shakopee Ice Arena had been sold, I'm sorry, went into partnership with a private organization. So, and now our kids don't have access, enough access to ice. So, and I know that the private organization starts their business in February. Parents have been, parents of the figure skating children have been told they would have access to ice in January. However, the January ice had been canceled on the last day of December. And according to the Shakopee Ice Arena management, that happened due to not enough passes had been sold. So, I searched every official website of this city and I couldn't find anywhere about the minimum requirement. So, I called the city and had been told that the ice is open. So, I pulled the schedule and here is how the schedule looks like for January. And I'm here to understand why our kids don't have access to ice in January. So, that would be my one concern. My another concern is, so, according to this proposed schedule from the private organization, our kids or community should have access to the ice from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. It states right there. However, the Ice Arena management says us, we would have ice from 6:00 a.m. until 7:45 a.m. So, I guess I would like to ask you to act here and guarantee us access to, access to our kids, figure skating kids, from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. Grant us at least one night during weekdays and some flexible, some reasonable time on weekends. So, and the last thing, but not the least, so, they are my daughter awards. And the parents behind me, so, their kids, our kids, have been awarded as well. So, our kids raise up on pedestal, then they compete with other clubs and other studios. And our kids are Shakopee residents. So, that really hurt that no one mentioned our kids then the agreement had been signed. Everyone got excited about hockey players, but no one said a word about our kids, figure skating kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does staff want to comment on this at all?
Jay can comment on it, Mayor, but I believe you had an email that was forwarded to all of you today as well from Jay.
Just a few comments, Mr. Mayor. One, in the metro area right now, just about all ice arenas have stopped their freestyle program, the way that we offered that normally. And they instead are offering it hourly because the current protocols, U.S. Hockey, Minnesota Hockey, and the Minnesota State High School League have all published protocols. Unfortunately, we received no clear guidance from U.S. Figure Skating and the Minnesota Department of Health guidance is pretty gray. Miami Minnesota Ice Arena Managers Association, ring managers got together and they tried to discuss different alternatives to help facilitate freestyle programming and they concluded that it was just too difficult. And some of those constraints, one of the ideas was breaking the ice up into four quadrants because it's only supposed to be one household by the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines, but you could potentially do the 12-foot distancing and that because, like I said, they're gray. As far as our schedule, what, the reason the January schedule is blank is because we are not offering those programs, open skating, figure skating freestyle, youth open hockey or hockey development. However, the ice on those hours are available for purchase because then whoever purchases is responsible for those protocols, if that makes sense. So, youth hockey manages the protocols through their volunteers. They staff it to ensure that their coaches are enforcing what the Minnesota High School or Minnesota State High School League and the Minnesota Hockey League are requiring. So, that's what youth and the high school teams are doing. If anyone were to rent it, they'd be responsible for one household or whatever it would be. And I happen to know that that woman's coach is renting ice in another community. She's just choosing to not rent ice in Shakopee. And the reason is because Bloomington has three sheets and their price is cheaper at $125 an hour because they're trying to pull folks in to fill up their sheets. Our going rate is $170 an hour for anyone that rents it. And that's available for anyone who wants to rent it when it's not currently under obligation by the Minnesota, the high school team or the youth hockey team. As far as the contract, I do want to clarify the schedule she talked about starting February 1st. Her student is absolutely welcome and we'd encourage her to sign up for Shakopee Skate School. It can be registered, she can register through the Parks and Recreation Software. It's open to every Shakopee resident and they will be placed accordingly based upon their capabilities. And that's, they would then be able to skate from 9:00 until 2:45 if they made it into the advanced or elite program. Or the intermediate and beginners are on Saturdays and in the evenings on Wednesdays. We are going to continue the freestyle program prior to the skate school opening schedule and it is from 6:00 until 9:00 on Mondays and Fridays. On Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, that's when we have other programming that we're trying to open it up to the rest of the Shakopee community and get their interest, like I'd mentioned, the adaptive skating program and some of the other programs that we're going to be doing from that 8 to 9 period. So, in fact, it is open from 6:00 to 9:00 twice a week, Monday through Friday, and then it's open from 6:00 to 8:00 on Saturday. Subject to your questions, Mayor and Council, that's all I have for comment.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Jay, did I hear you correct that a resident can skate, figure skate, Monday, Wednesday, or Saturday, 6:00 to 9:00?
That is correct. Anyone who wants to buy the freestyle pass, which is the way that we used to manage that from 9:00 and, or from 6:00 until 2:45 every day, anyone can. A resident can buy one of those passes. If they only wanted to skate on Saturday, they would be $65. If they wanted to do that window, Monday through Saturday, every day during the month or every week during the month, that'd be $125.
Okay. Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, when Jay talks about the protocols of these other organizations, is he, Jay, are you referring to the state COVID guidance that these associations or groups are following as a body?
So, Councilmember Lehman, there's two things that happen. Minnesota Department of Health has put out guidance, general guidance for sports, and then they also point you to particular sports for their governing bodies that they're enforcing. So, the high school teams have to follow Minnesota State High School League rules, which are a little bit different than Minnesota hockey rules. Some examples would be, right now, they cannot use the lockers. They're only allowed to practice two pods of 25 and those pods have to stay the same so that they can control who's in the group. And those are examples that we can't control who's on the ice in a figure skating group because there isn't a governing body.
Right.
When it's just drop-in.
And to, just to clarify, what we're trying to control is adherence to the state mandated COVID guidance.
Correct. We're trying to adhere to the guidance that's been implemented and unfortunately, we haven't gotten any figure skating guidance since October, which was a collaborative effort at that time from U.S. Hockey, the U.S. Ice Arena Managers and figure skating. But nothing's been updated from many figure skating authorities since October.
Okay.
So, if this group wanted to come forward, they'd have to have protocols to follow protocols and have an outline and then they could rent ice? Is that correct?
If they rented ice, the protocols for ice rental are a little bit different, Mr. Mayor, than for those that have governing bodies. And those protocols are published on our website, at the Ice Arena website. They'd have to adhere to those protocols.
Okay. And that would be as a group and then like Councilor Lehman brought up, as an individual, then you could free skate during, I think those three times during those hours with, provided that you had a pass, correct?
That's correct. And what's going to happen in February, Mr. Mayor, we're assuming that those protocols that are required are going to change in order to offer that freestyle program. If there hasn't been any further guidance by February, we still might not be able to offer that morning freestyle.
Councilor Lehman, did you have more?
You asked my question, Mayor. Thank you.
Yep. Other comments? Did you have more? I guess there are some alternatives available to you or your group and your skaters. So, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Adam and my daughter, my wife, and my daughter is skating at, used to skate at Shakopee Public Arena, Ice Arena. I just want to bring a couple of points. Even though there was, just comment back to Jay, what Jay said, even though there was a passes supposed to be available, they are not available to the kids. So, we tried to purchase, on December, we tried to purchase passes for the January and they were just canceled. And there is no system, maybe Jake and, sorry, Mr. Tobin can confirm that, but there's no system to purchase those passes through online portal. There's not, there's no such thing that we've done in the past. There was always in person and on the rink as far as, am I correct? Yes. So, I'm not sure where this coming from about purchasing passes through the system, but, all right. So, we'll maybe get clarification from Mr. Tobin on this one. I want to bring a couple of other points on just Ice Arena and management and communication parts of it. It's just, it's just hard to believe that right now, if you go into the web portal and you will decide to search for Ice Arena or Ice Ring or go to the Google Maps and try to search for any ice that you want to use or skating, you'll just enter those terms. Like, for example, I tried Ice Arena, Ice Skating, Ice Ring in the Google Map and it just doesn't show the Shakopee Ice Arena. And this is after five years, five years that this was built. So, that tells you a little bit about management. How would other parents who would want to skate, would they want to bring their kids to skating? How would they find Shakopee Ice Arena? How would they find Shakopee Ice Arena if it doesn't exist? You know what exists on that one? If you do search for that, I just found it. Edge Tech. You probably don't know what's Edge Tech, but that's a little shop, commercial shop, that was rented a space in front, by the front door on Ice Arena. That's what it is. That's what our Shakopee Ice Arena, that was spent probably more than a million dollars on to build, that's what our Ice Arena represented. And management, Ice Arena, right, Ice Rink, Ice Rink Management, they just decided not to advertise. How would they bring the kids? How would they bring new blood? How would, what happened with the new contract? What happened with the selling into private, not selling, sorry, partnership with a private organization that provides skating? How would that come to be if we don't exist? Basically, I'm a tech person, that's why I'm searching all of that, and I know how to find something. And even I couldn't find much of the Ice Arena that's, I guess, taxpayers spends millions of dollars on. So that's one thing, that's, I'm not sure, I'm sure if you want to follow up on this one, you can find out, all this is not just my research, you can repeat all of that. And another point I want to bring to the attention is that communication. Communication that was done on the policies and communications that done by the Shakopee Ice Arena management to the users. There is not much, if you go to the web portal, CT-based web portal for the Ice Arena Rink, the only policy that said over there is that you have to wear a mask. That's pretty much it. There's no, I've heard a different thing, again, if you want to follow up on details, you can, you can do that, you can bring it, you can ask Mr. Tobin or Ice Rink Manager, Management, but there was something about number of passes that have to be sold, policies of being in the building, not being in the building, policies about if you're certain, kid a certain age or requires that parents allowed, none of it exists on the web portal. I did search for a couple hours, just trying to find if there's anything like that exists. And that's, you know, after eight months of COVID. So that's a big, big shortcoming. And it just not, doesn't seem that we have a management that actually interested in communicating. It's more of a little silo that created by management, Ice Rink Management, that they controlling and they not interested in advertising what happens inside. So, that's it. That's all I want to bring to your attention.
Well, thank you. We are in the middle of a pandemic. Our community center has been closed. It has been open partially. It's been closed again. And obviously with the Minnesota Department of Health, things have changed, especially in the, obviously in the last six months. We're trying to get to some normalcy and what that looks like in the future for all of us. I think for your group, I just heard that there's some alternatives, opportunities for your group to skate either freestyle or to buy ice time. I'm not sure about your search methods. I think I've been on our city website and looked at our community center and their facilities and ice time. But things evolve, right? And I, I can't speak to the policies that are out there and how readily they're available or if other communities have their policies out there too. But I, I think there's some alternatives for your group that have come forward here. And with the changing environment, maybe things will actually improve and there'll be, you know, will be open more in a capacity. But if you're a ice skater or a swimmer or a exercise person, I know that you had to go through the portal, sign up for specific times, et cetera, to do that because we just, crowd management for the safety, health and safety of our residents.
Right. And that would be nice to relate to the people who went attended, right? So that would be part of the policies that Ice Arena Management could provide. And, you know, the Ice Arena Management have not been laid off, right? For the, this period for eight months of the COVID. So they are still on a job and it's still required to take whatever government laws creates and convert it to the whatever rules requires to Ice Rink Management. So that's what I was meaning by policies. That not necessarily copying, pasting what the government, the governor tells, but just converting it so it's adapted to whatever the environment they have. So, and none of this exists. So that's what I want to bring to your attention.
Thank you very much and your group. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Karen Wagner. I live at 2395 Jennifer Lang, Shakopee, Minnesota. Thank you all for your service. I know that it's a hard time, and I do want to sincerely say thank you on behalf of the Shakopee citizens for all you do for our community. So thank you. I am up here on a similar but different topic tonight. It's concerning the presentation that was presented on 12/15 about the long-term partnership with the Go For Gold for-profit entity to enhance our Shakopee skate program. As a citizen, I'm actually quite concerned about some of the gaps in what was shared with you all as council members and as the mayor about what value this will bring for the city of Shakopee. In some of the information that was represented, and maybe there's more that was shared behind the scenes or in a different venue, it was represented that there are no Shakopee families that are currently benefiting from the current skate program. That is untrue, as you see here today. There are actually 14 Shakopee families in addition of eight other families outside of the community that was attracting people to this, to this community skate program. And the decision to go for a Go For Gold, while I understand Mr. Tobin's perspective that it will offer some opportunities for us to skate during times, we have young children and it will not work for those young children at the times he's offering, and it will cost us more as Shakopee residents to skate as he has described it here, which I find dissatisfactory. The financials represented and what was represented in the financial value for Shakopee, I think needs to have more due diligence done around it because it is actually not representative of what I think could be a part of the decision that was made. There is historical financial information that feel, that I have been told is out there that actually demonstrates a different story. So I would humbly request that this council and the mayor to actually do more diligence around the actual financials that were represented as well as the partner and quality of partner that was selected. And finally, the change from a community skating program to a for-profit entity is going to, as I said, cost financial impact. So we really do humbly request of you, the city council, the mayor, to conduct a more financial, a thorough financial review of the historical program, the diligence done on selecting a partner, was it transparent? And understand the impact us as families of Shakopee and our experience. In no time, over the past three months, six months that this has been going on, have the 14 Shakopee families had any communication about what we would want for an experience? And it is disappointing that that partnership is not there as a community service for the population of Shakopee. So I humbly request that you act on behalf of our community to do more diligence to make sure this partnership is the right partnership for our citizens and for our community, given that it's a five-year partnership and it has longstanding impacts to our families. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments and one question for our Recreation Director. Comments, the financials and the terms with the contract that we have, these are, these are ongoing and looked at on a regular basis. Granted, it's new, but will be looked at on an ongoing basis, both the relationship and the financials. And if I'm not mistaken, the contract that I read does have a termination clause for either side with written notice if that partnership or financials do not work out as were anticipated. So the first question, if Mr. Tobin can answer that, am I correct in that statement? And then I have a follow-up question.
You're absolutely correct, Councilmember Lehman. There are termination clauses for both sides if it's determined that this is not a mutually beneficial partnership.
My second question, Mayor, would be, have we taken actions with the residents, this group that, 14 apparently, and how they could be incorporated and using our ice? I know they can rent time, but I guess my bigger question is, we have this program that we're trying, trying to work with, that we adopted. What stops groups of residents that are very active in skating to join that group and be a part of that group, which offers multiple levels from beginners, intermediate, and, you know, very good? So I guess, I don't know the answer to that question. Why don't, why, why wouldn't these groups within our community that are really active in skating join this larger organization and have them opportunities?
Let's, did you want to?
Well, obviously, 14 families have chosen to move to another ice arena, spending money in other communities. There's concerns with the quality of the program that's potentially being brought in. So there is a disconnect there. I have not had personal time to vet this. I have been hearing from many people that there are quality issues. I don't know this personally and I can't attest to that, but this is very short notice that this has all come about. And so we're responding as families as fast as we can with, what, seven, 14 days to respond to this in a way that's appropriate and within protocols.
And we've never rented the ice before as a community resident. We just paid for the unlimited passes, so we ran $145 up to $130. I don't remember exactly.
Ma'am, if you're going to talk, if you're going to talk, you're going to have to come up to the microphone.
Yes, thank you.
Because nobody can understand what you're saying.
We've never rented the ice before. Like I said, my daughter had been skating for about four years at the Shakopee Ice Arena, and I'm not sure why we are offering this option right now. We always paid unlimited pass or daily passes. So the unlimited pass was about $145 to $180 a month. So, and that, that began after the COVID hit. But we never rented the ice before as Shakopee residents. I mean, it is, it is expensive, yes. And I don't know if we would be able to afford to sign up for this for-profit organization, so.
Thank you.
In that same vein, my understanding is that other attempts have been made to purchase the ice on behalf of the coach, and they've been told no. That is somebody else representing information to me. I can't represent it as factual. I started all of this as, I asked for-
Speak into the microphone.
Sorry. I asked as beginning on this, is that there's just more diligence done because I know I don't have all the facts. But a lot of pieces of information are not adding up, that this is the right solution for Shakopee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Counselor White, you just got a question, Mayor?
Did you have a question?
If there's others that want to speak, let them speak.
I'm going to just stay a couple minutes, not more. My name is Mila Surnik, and I'm a resident in Shakopee for four years. And I just wanted to share the appreciation for the opportunity we had to skate at the arena. For, we were skating for the last two years. My daughter is seven years old. It opened a whole new world for her. We had so many exciting moments as a family. And she was growing and she was developing. And I just, I was sharing her development with every person I knew, and it was very exciting. And with the changes to come, being, I represent the low-income families. I'm not going to be able to keep bringing my daughter. If the prices is going to go up, I'm not going to be able to do it. And as Carissa said, that with the hours we were offered, with the small children, it would be very difficult too. If that would be, if I would be talking about my 16-year-old, my 17-year-old, they can jump in their car and they can go and practice and do whatever they feel right to do at six or five or seven in the morning. But with the smaller kids, it takes a lot of effort to keep them going forward in what they love to do at this time, early in the morning. Thank you very much. But I still thankful for the opportunity we had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, other comments, counselors? Counselor Whiting?
I just want to quickly add that, you know, we've built a great community center. And pre-COVID times, we were looking at the financials and we were doing, we were doing very successfully as far as ice arenas go in the state. It's a popular venue and unfortunately, with popularity, the hours, the more prime hours are going to go quickly as far as, you know, the value and, and they're going to cost more. I do think that they brought, some of the speakers brought up some great pointers that I think staff has taken note of with some of the marketing and wayfinding things and websites. Is Mr. Tobin taking notes? So hopefully staff is going to take a look at that and we can move forward and try and find ways to get everybody's ice time when we can.
Thank you, Jay.
I just wanted to address the Google Maps thing. That's, that's not just a difficulty with the ice arena. So what happens is the Google algorithms, they register the last, last vendor decided up there. So the reason Edge Tech shows up, prior to that, it was E-Train. We don't control the protocols or the algorithm that they use. But we can definitely take a look, I'll talk with Andy, to see if we can re-register Google. So the reason that happened is because it, it takes as the address whatever the last one was that was registered. So when you initially search for the ice arena, it will come up. But when it actually shows up, it shows up as Edge Tech. Prior to Edge Tech, it showed up as E-Train. And we tried to work with, with Google to fix that. But it's got a significant fee if you want to have exclusive access to it.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on Counselor Whiting's comments, and this council is well aware, but maybe the public is not, we pay $2.2 million per year of taxpayer money for the debt per year on the building itself, for the community center and the ice rinks. We also pay an additional almost a million dollars a year to operate it. And these are dollars above and beyond revenue that comes into the facility, not just ice, but all-encompassing. And one of the goals of this council and the past council has been to try to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and try to minimize that subsidy to the population at large. We recognize that there are people that do not use the community center yet are paying for it. They don't use it, maybe they don't want to use it or it doesn't have what they're offering that they prefer. So we need to make sure that we, when, you know, when we look at the financials, we're looking at a very broad picture, as we should. And I, I'm not putting out the eight or 14 families that utilize some ice. You are members of this community, you are important. And I would ask that Jay would, Tobin would work with these families and also work with the company that we signed a contract with because it seems to me that there's, there's an opportunity for a partnership and a partnership and a partnership here to where everybody wins. Because I think the, the group that we have a contract with offers some things that aren't currently available to these families. And I think these families could benefit from these. And I also think the company that we have the contract with, hearing some of the feedback from our individual family members that utilize ice is critical for them to be successful long-term within our community. So we have a great opportunity right here. And I would ask that those in attendance at this meeting right now, from our community that use ice, please, please, continue to be involved and make this contract and these opportunities better, not only for our community, but for your own personal needs. We have an opportunity here. And, and Mr. Tobin, you're right in the middle of it. And I'd like to see you work on that a little bit if the council concurs. I think there's a great opportunity here.
If I may, just a reminder-
Or Mr. Reynolds?
If I just remind everyone that this particular part of our agenda is not meant for any decision-making. Now, you can certainly ask us as staff to look at the issue and bring something back. That way, we make sure that there's plenty of notice for everybody if any decisions are going to be made. So please just keep that in mind.
Jay?
Just, just wanted to comment, it's important, and these family members might not know this, they all have the same coach. And when we were looking for a partner, that was the first person that we approached and asked her to partner in creating the Shakopee Skate School. And she said she wasn't interested. And at that point, that's when we posted it onto our website that said that we were looking for a partner. The reason we put it on the website is because we wanted to make sure that it was someone that was interested, they're going to the calendar, paying atten- They're going to the calendar, uh, paying attention because they're a part of the Shakopee community. And, uh, those folks were skating at our rink and they saw that. And that's why they approached us. But the first person that we asked to partner was their coach. And she wasn't interested. And so that's why we had to go someplace else.
You know, sometimes together we can make stronger and, uh, collaboration. But I, I see alternatives for your group, either passes or buying ice time. And ice is very competitive all over the metro. Um, we're fully aware of that. And, uh, you know, passes, rent ice, or join forces and make an organization better. Obviously, these are just suggestions. I'm sorry for your frustration. Uh, we are looking out for our community in a global picture, especially with our community center. It doesn't serve all of our community. It's available, but it doesn't serve all of our community. It can, um, and there are fees and we hear about those fees all the time. But as Counselor Lehman said, uh, we need to make that sustainable and it is subsidized. And we work at that all the time and not, we don't wanna raise fees to, then you won't have any users in, in the pool or, or in exercise or any of that or membership. Uh, cause we wanna increase membership. And it is just a fine balance, uh, for that. So, thank you very much for your comments and discussion tonight. We do appreciate it. Um, this is part of the agenda here to ask any citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an agenda item or on a non-agenda item, please come forward. State your name and address for the record on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we would move forward then. And we would move to, uh, six, no business removed from consent. I would entertain six point one. I would entertain a motion to, uh, recess to the EDA. Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, uh, item six one, recess, I'll make a motion to recess to the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras to recess to EDA. Uh, further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. We stand in recess for the EDA. Mr. President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome everyone to the, uh, January fifth meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Please make note of the role. Uh, item two on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion that's second by Contreras. Uh, any discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor, uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Whiting?
Aye. Motion passes, we have an agenda. Uh, next is our consent business, which has the EDA minutes. Any questions, uh, Ms. Brennan?
I'm no questions, but I make a motion to approve the consent business. Second.
Motion that's second by Contreras. Any discussion, discussion, discussion. Uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Bren, Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Whiting?
Aye. Uh, looks like we have nothing for general business tonight. Uh, left on the agenda is item five, the reports. We have an EDA bill list. Is there any questions on the bill list? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February second.
Motion is second by Brennan. Uh, any discussion, discussion, discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Whiting?
Aye. We stand in adjournance, thank you.
We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for January fifth, two thousand and one, two thousand twenty-one. We, uh, just completed our EDA portion of the meeting and we are on seven A one, Refuge and Recycling. Uh, and Mr. Perkett will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, this item is to have the council go over two things. The first being, um, kind of walking through the elements of a RFP or an RFQ and kind of prioritizing those things that the council wants to see changed. And the other is I, I, after spending an inordinate amount of time walking through, um, all of this information and really thinking about options, I'd like to suggest again that the, the council at least consider the option or possibility of opening up the system and, and taking a different approach. There's a lot of different reasons, uh, for both types of systems. But it might just be a good idea to take a good look at, at, uh, making, opening the system of more viable alternative. So, I can go either direction, do either one of those first, you can let me know, but, um...
Um, any, you know, I think this is a kind of a policy, if we wanna change policy from a currently competitive bid, uh, closed system or to a quadrant-type open system with, with, uh, assigned haulers to certain areas on certain days.
Mr. Mayor, maybe help, be helpful if I kind of explain what the basic proposed alternative is. Would be that we break the city up into approximately five different zones and we assign each zone a day. And then we license any number of haulers who will then be able to contract with individual residences within the community. And the only obligation, uh, the major obligation that they would have under the ordinance is that they pick up during that day. Of course, they're also subject to other rules, regulations, laws, and other elements of the ordinance we may create. Um, but what that does is it gives residents the opportunity to choose their own hauler. Um, and it also gets the city out of being kind of the middleman relative to that relationship.
Counselor Whiting?
Let's start this by trying to cut it short here. I have no interest in that. We, cities take a lot of exhaustive time to try and get a closed system. We, uh, have some obstacles, we have some concerns. Do I think that our assistant city administrator should be handling the garbage? No, I think we lost a little bit. I think we did not staff this properly. If we, we, we need somebody managing our trash and maybe a guy in a truck with a clipboard fixing trash cans and things like that. But I do not want to open the system up in any way. And I'll leave it at that and let, maybe we can cut this in half.
Counselor Brennan?
I like the, um, idea of having options. Um, and I think that maybe we could work with the current provider to provide options to our residents. Um, I have concerns about, um, having multiple, um, haulers. Um, I live on an alley and the thought of possibly twelve trucks going down the alley on a Tuesday, um, morning, um, I, is, is, would, you know, my alley does not hold up to the three trucks that are going through there currently with, um, the one, the one hauler that we have. Um, I can't imagine twelve trucks going through the alley, um, on any particular day. Um, or, or through a roundabout or any other area. Um, but I do like the, I like the idea of having our, our, um, an options, a variety of options, um, available. Um, and I also don't think that our staff should be managing day-to-day, the process and the, and the way that our, things are done by Republic. Um, so I think that that needs to be rectified, um, and minimized on our end.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I can, I guess I'm gonna try to hit on both sides of the issue, um, and just get it all out there of what I'm thinking. And I agree with, with the assistant city administrator that there's pros and, and cons either way. You can't really say that one's better than the other because they both have different pros and different cons. I do like the open option from the standpoint of it drives free market competition. And if you don't like your service, you're free to find somebody else. And when you pit the companies against each other, they tend to, one, give you better service, two, give you better pricing. So I like that aspect of it. I don't like the aspect of more trucks tearing up our infrastructure. Um, I think when we talk about zones within the city, uh, Counselor Brennan, I don't believe that the intent is to have all different haulers concentrated in one zone on the same day. I, I, I see it the opposite. I would, I would see it as split up so that hauler A would be on a different side of town as hauler B over here and C over here and, uh, switching around um, so that they're not all concentrated in one area on one, one day. But then if we continue with the closed system, well, let me back up. If we did go to an open-type system like Eden Prairie, the big question we have is half a million dollars worth of cart expense that the taxpayers at large are, are gonna, are funding now and, uh, one way or the, the other are gonna have to pay, uh, to complete that half million, uh, five hundred, what is it, five hundred thousand dollars? Is that what's remaining, half million? So even if we went with an open system, um, and figured out the zoning, uh, areas of town, we would probably have to work into the licensing and the ordinance some way to continue to collect a cart fee, whether they have some other hauler's cart or not, so that equitably every user within the community is paying off the rest of that debt on the carts. That's the only fair and equitable way to do it. So I, I do see that as possible. Now, if I look at just a closed system, uh, there's a lot of opportunity there and we all know it. You know, I, I'm all in favor of more options for the consumer, um, whether smaller carts and, and every week service or every other week, uh, if we're gonna stick with the carts that we have. The longer snowbird option is always good. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of good things that we could do in a closed system. The only drawback is we don't get that free market competition to drive the customer service that individuals are looking for and to drive the price point. So, my, my three cents either way.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I think, you know, and that really is the crux of the issue, uh, Counselor Lehman, because the more options you provide, the more expensive things become. Uh, and, and by interjecting the city into the process as opposed to allowing, uh, you know, Bill Reynolds, citizen resident to call up whoever he wants to call and says, okay, I only want this bag every other week. That's a very easy step for me to take as a resident. But what we are finding as a staff is that we become the point of trying to make all of that happen. And we can certainly, and, and, and here's the big deal. The more options and the more, uh, uh, opportunities you have for issues to arise. Uh, because if we have a multi-faceted system with all these options with one carrier, one, like I said before, that's gonna raise the price because they have to make adjustments throughout that. It's not a one shoe fits everybody. Uh, but the other one is, is that obviously the impacts that that has, uh, uh, to the overall market, uh, when it comes to getting, getting your trash taken care of, so.
Thank you. Nate, and then I'll come back to Counselor Whiting. Nate?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to kind of expand on, uh, what Mr. Reynolds said is, I've, I've heard from a couple of people today that, for example, every week recycling as an option would be desirable. The problem is if you create it as an option, you're probably pricing about half of the people out of the market. And if you make it required, the number of people who are going to be frustrated over what's currently a twenty-dollar bill per month is gonna turn into something about, I would say, twenty-seven dollars per month to add recycling one more time. I, you know, I think that you're kind of in between a rock and a hard place. You, we, and another point that I would make is that one of the complications relative to our contract with Republic, and I don't wanna be seen as a Republic apologist, is that we have made it extraordinarily complicated. In that, I mean, you can look at the bills, for example. The way that the bills are broken out is extraordinarily complicated relative to what you would normally see if you were just an individual customer or even in other communities. And all of the ex, and when every time we look at creating another option for someone, we're making the system more complicated and more prone to error. And I said in my memo, I get, I get about, in a normal month, about five, maybe six phone calls from somebody who's having a billing problem or a pickup problem. And I get most of those resolved within twenty-four hours. But they're all tied to those complications within the system. So if you're looking for ways to increase people's overall satisfaction, which by the way, I don't think should be very low, because if you think about it, they do twenty-four thousand pickups a week on average. And they take six hundred to eight hundred customer service phone calls per month on average. And they maybe mess up a couple of those customer service calls, less than a one percent error rate. And absent weather conditions like we had during the week of, of Christmas Eve, and then the week after when they had a truck breakdown, we have relatively minimal missed pickups and operational issues. So Republic does a good job with those operational things. It's just when somebody sees it happening to them, they call me. And then that does become a relatively significant investment in time as well.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to go back here and talk about the discussion, um, about the carts first. I wanna separate that out because we had the staff person, I think it was even pre-Chris Wilson, I think it was Tracy that did that, all the legwork on doing, digging into the trash business and, and things like that. And we found that the racket was really in the carts, that there was a fee, continuous fee for carts, and it never went away. And some of our carts lasted many, many years. So by taking the carts away from the contract, it really made it easier. In the end, it didn't because we had to maintain carts and things. But it made it easier to take that whole racket away. I, I think that was important. We didn't think about where we're gonna maintain carts. Do we got the guy in the truck with the clipboard and the spare parts to fix the carts or to go run these customer service calls? We never budgeted that. We, I, I think my cart has lasted ever since I got it. It's never had a problem. You know, I, I see trash as a utility in my mind. It's, it's something that, uh, it should be maintained for, for the health and safety of the community. I see it as a definite issue for a city council to manage. I do think we should think about budgeting somebody to manage this. And, and I have a problem opening it up, um, to all the vehicles and things. Uh, we had the illegal dumping before. We had, uh, dumping in your neighbor's trash thing going on. We had, uh, trucks up and down the streets every day. And then if there was trash flowing around, well, it was never this service's problem, it was the other guy. So we never could figure out that. We had traffic issues. Again, I mentioned the accountability issues. The more options, the more quagmire of issues that we're gonna create for ourselves. So I really think, uh, keeping it closed, keeping, uh, the options, more options are better. But I really think we need to budget a staff- closed, keeping the options, more options are better, but I really think we need to budget a staff person to maintain carts, maintain shoes. And I I think uh keeping it under one business is a trash hauler's business, I think, is is a good idea. We have a better control system wide, and that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Nate?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Whiting, I I would suggest that it the the having city staff as a point of contact can probably be resolved through contract with the provider where we get a consistent local contact. Republic has done a good job moving towards that, but I still end up in the middle on a reasonable number. Relative to the carts, we actually do get a good deal for them in the maintenance. When we, we still own something in the vicinity, I would say, of about eighteen thousand carts, which is a problem in and of itself that I can't pinpoint an exact number. But those carts ran out of warranty at the end of six years, which would have been a year ago, and it was kind of a declining warranty. And there were a lot of issues relative to those carts. So every year, we have fewer and fewer carts and less and less cart revenue. So it's kind of a complicated scenario, but here again, our current contract does a good job of managing how the carts are maintained. And I think that if we are going to continue with a contracted service, one of the elements that we should put into the contract is a direct local contact that we've been migrating towards with Republic. However, it's kind of a work in progress.
Our city attorney wants to weigh in?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanna clarify something, and maybe it's clear, but just in case. The um open system that um Nate is presenting as an option, designating, let's say, five different areas of the city to be picked up on Monday, you know, through Friday each day. Those residents within those areas still get to pick their own haulers. So there could be, just right, there could be hypothetically up to ten haulers driving up and down alleys in that section of the city on that day. The option of designating a hauler for each five cities, excuse me, each five areas, and saying to hauler A, you get this area, B, C, that is organized collection. That that's not an independent, that's not independent. That is because some cities that have organized collection have one hauler for the whole city, Chocabi. Other cities divide up their city and and give hauler A this portion, hauler B this portion, hauler. So within that area, there's only one hauler collecting. So dividing up the cities is not the criteria for whether you have organized collection or not. Organized collection is defined in the statute as designating a hauler to pick up trash either throughout the city or in a portion of the city. So I I just wanted to clarify that uh that distinction.
So my question is, if we had an era area of the, you know, divvied up the community into four or five areas geographically and said, Monday, South Bridge is gonna get picked up, right, in that area, whatever that area looks like? And then we had designated haulers to choose from. All the four haulers would be in those neighborhoods in that section on that day. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's certain, that would be, that's the approach that Eden Prairie takes. And did some checking around, and actually, Mr. Kersky uh has personal awareness of it, and that that's how the system works in Eden Prairie.
So I kinda go back over my time involvement in the city and look at why, why did we go to a competitively bid closed system? And health and safety, better for the roads, one, one company to deal with rather than five or six. All those things that have driven many cities to do what we have been doing. You know, Burnsville had a contentious situation, and that got resolved into a competitively bid system. St. Paul had their own little issues. That's kind of now a consortium. But a competitively closed system, as I, as I view St. Paul, Minneapolis has a consort, has their own city pickup plus another con, uh group consortium that work together. But I worry that if we had a section of the community and three or four haulers on a Monday, you could have one hauler. We talked about the roads and and all that. One garbage truck, one yard waste seasonal, and one recycling truck, maybe every week, maybe every other week. My comment on recycling right now during a pandemic is we are recycling more because we're home more. That's my opinion. I at our house recycle. Our bin is full all the time. Is that the norm? Is this just a situation in time? Is it a trend? I don't, I don't know if every week solves that problem. And then if we add in that the wave of the future is gonna be organics, that's a, that's another truck. So one hauler during the summer could have three or four trucks in a certain neighborhood on a certain day, one hauler. And if we open that up, you could have four haulers, could have minimum of twelve trucks in that neighborhood going up and down. I think that's why I go back to why we close the system. So we'd have one, one point of contact, uh, limiting the the amount on our roads. I don't know how many routes Republic has. I think they have three. And we've tweaked that over the years. And I'm trying to, is this the wave of the future to go back open again or semi-closed but competitive or let the consumer choice? I don't, I think that during a competitively bid open or closed system, that every time that contract comes up, for the most part, and there are extensions, you are bidding that out competitively. I know the last time we made a change, ironically, it was because some viewed customer service was poor of the last provider. Well, it's funny now, it's five, six, seven years later, and now we, customer service is a, is one of the topics here. I listen very intently, because my wife's in the business, about what our issues are. And if we were to go to a competitively bid closed system, we would try to tweak those things that we want. And I will agree with Mr. Reynolds that in a contract that's competitively and you want more à la carte, you want better this, better that, that, that that intends to drive up the cost. The whole idea of having a, for the most part, is to make sure everybody has garbage service, reduce the illegal dumping, make it competitively by bidding it out, um, not picking and choosing in a true open system. There's plenty of things that are deemed a monopoly or one choice that a that a resident doesn't get to choose, or utility. Years for years, it was a single cable source as well. Typically, utilities type actions do create just one, one organization, but I think we can do better, but the costs are. The cart situation, um, I don't know if I have a solution for that. I, I, I do think that it's a, I would have never gotten in the cart business in the beginning, but here we are. Mr. Reynolds?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the the cart issue actually i- is not that difficult to figure out. Uh, essentially, as uh Nate and I have been talking about, we would, as part of our licensing fee, we would just have a small piece of that, part of that licensing fee that would go to paying off the cart. Uh, and then once that piece had been done and that was paid off, it would be taken care of. But I I think, I I think that, uh, you know, from a staff perspective, we kind of get the idea at this point. Uh, we thought it was important to bring the idea of an open system forward because there are many things that have changed since this was put, put in place for the city of Chocabi. For example, we don't have the same kinds of roads. We build roads a heck of a lot better than what they were at that point. So, you know, the idea of 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 a few more trucks a week on the roads, other than the alleys, which is, which is clear, which is an issue.
And we've worked on that every contract, just trying to get more curbside.
And that, and that, and the alleys are certainly, certainly the issue when it comes to truck, truck traffic. But other than that, our infrastructure is 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 more well-built than any time in the past, and and so on the roads themselves. Public roads, not private roads, but the good thing about that is those people with private roads can contract with the little trucks to come in and 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 have their uh waste taken away. So, but anyway, um, we we just wanted to make sure that uh that option was out there and had a a good discussion because, uh, you know, we we hear it all the time. Why, why is the city involved and who picks up my trash? And, you know, that's a legitimate question. Uh, and I think that, uh, you know, it it ultimately is a policy decision. There are trade-offs as with with any policy decision, and that, you know, trying to fashion that à la carte service piece is going to have that price piece that might be different if I was to do it on my own. So, um, you know, as long as we understand that, then we can move forward and 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 recognize that, uh, you know, we do, Nate has worked a lot on the options for a closed system that we currently uh could plug in. And and I would just suggest we go ahead and move down that lane.
Yeah, I, you know, I, over the years, it's funny because we contract this company to do a service in our community. It's a big contract, usually five years. Yet I do, I have felt it. This, the city is involved, right? Because they're gonna call the city rather than the organization, or they call the organization and don't get their situation resolved, and then they call Nate, and then sometimes they call me. But um, I think Republic is, I think our current provider has gotten more responsive. They had a billing issue a couple of years ago. And Nate's correct, out of the twenty four thousand pickups, five hundred calls a year, not all those are a complaint. Usually, it's a quick billing system or issue or something. Most businesses like that have customer service inflow, and uh we need to be cautious that not all of those calls are a cranky hank, right? Counselor Contreras, you've listened. Um, do you wanna weigh in here?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, actually, I I, from the beginning, I was opposed to actually opening it, um, opening the whole system. But I feel that with the current service that we have, they have, like you said, they have done good things. They've tried to work it out. Um, and I feel that if we could just go back and tweak, you know, those, those things we need to that we've um, that we've spoken about and that are highlighted, um, having a a person of contact, a local person of contact and other, you know, things that we pointed out, um, I feel that will make things better. So I do agree with with doing that, but not opening it up to having, like the um attorney said, multiple, because even if you did zone it in, you know, different areas, you would have multiple um trucks going through, and that's something I, even though um, Mr. Reynolds said that the streets are better, but still there's some areas that aren't ready for that. So I'd like to keep it the way we we have it set and just try to figure out and work a contract, a better, a better, you know, better options for that. That's it.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, so it sounds like we just wanna continue with the process of developing out the RFP or an RFQ and then getting the single hauler.
I think the majority of the council is what I'm hearing and listening to. I certainly wish that there was opportunity for more competitiveness without the, what I deem as impacts in the community, because I think as a council, you know, we we need to think globally, long term, best interest of the community as a whole. Does that make, everybody wants a choice? We've had a couple of different contracts over the years, and uh, you know, certainly some people have not been happy with either. Um, and I get that. But I think the, for the right thing to do, the city, I think our garbage bill, it's amazing, it creates so much conversation. My garbage bill is uh fifty eight dollars a quarter. Yes, I pay for yard waste as a one-time expense during the spring or whenever I pay that. But fifty eight dollars um for three months. But it does generate a um, a lot of conversation, and uh it's an interesting dynamic. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go back in some of the history on this closed system, and I don't disagree with either side, actually. Like I said, there's pros and cons either way. If we go way back, the reason we got into a closed system was people were actually not having a service and were utilizing somebody else's service. And I can talk to this personally because I tried to put my own trash, my own garbage can, and it was full, and it wasn't my trash. So somebody else was utilizing my service at my expense. Um, and that was happening not just here, but it was happening around town. So that was a problem, and people were dumping also excessively. So we originally got into this to require everybody to have a service so that they wouldn't have to be cheating somebody else out of something they've paid for. So I get that portion of it. The the thing that I keep moving back to, and I, and I do have another suggestion, uh, it kind of, it's related to trash and recycle, but it's not necessarily directly with what we're talking about. It would be a good idea for our city uh to have a list available, you know, if you have used batteries or used tires or these types of things, where you can dispose of them at and what that cost might be. There's no reason for people to be dumping uh ten tires out on somebody's property when we have it listed that you can take them to Liberty Tire and Savage. It's X amount of dollars. Here's their phone number. Uh, you can take car batteries to any automotive shop and get rid of them. And this, and these things just don't have to happen, and and there's less of an excuse if they know where they could take this properly. Back on topic, I keep going back to what I've been saying the whole time. And I use my mother as an example, love you, Mom. But here's, we know we have a growing po elderly population, uh, demographic trend coming. It's here, and it's only gonna grow, so none of us can dispute that. And we also have in that trend, these folks that have a, you know, ninety gallon recycled container, and they put one bag, one grocery bag in there per week. They, they couldn't fill a thing up in two or three months, and they're paying for it on an income that is extremely limited and uh doesn't keep up with any kind of uh consumer price index or inflation. So when we first started on this topic, I was trying to address some of these issues for not only these, these elderly populations or the ones that are are on the opposite side of the spectrum that have two homes, they spent half their, you know, most of their winter out of state or something, snowboarding it, and they're still forced to pay for something they're not using. Or you have the, the, pardon my mother's example, on the other side of the spectrum, or you have the lower income uh starting out family who's trying to control their own cost, and they have no ability to do so uh because they're locked into some of these things uh that we're mandating upon them. So I I totally get the infrastructure issue. Don't argue that. There's a lot of benefits both ways. I get it. Uh, but I wanna make sure that we, if we're gonna continue with a closed system and seek But I want to make sure that we, if we're going to continue with a closed system and seek RFPs, we're not looking at renewing with the existing company, although they may in fact be the best respondent in a bid process. That we try to address some of these issues without creating an impact, as Administrator Reynolds pointed out, of trying to put so much into the contract that you inflate it for everybody and you've actually made the problem worse for these lower incomes and these limited folks. So, I, you know, I think we need to keep all this in mind as we work through this process.
Okay. Councilor Whiting, is that a hand up? Yes.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure, if I didn't realize that the carts had dwindled to, and were, were such a problem concern, that it does sound like maybe we do want to get out of the cart business. But how we handle that in our RFQ and RFP, I think, is going to be kind of dicey since we do own the carts and I don't think we want to wholesale get rid of the ones we own. I guess that might be tricky, but I'm sure it sounds like staff hasn't figured it out and I look forward to seeing how that's addressed.
All right.
I, I do have one more question, Mayor.
Yes.
How many years do I pay for my carts until I own them?
That's a great question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lehman, in theory, the carts were supposed to be paid off in 10 years. For various reasons, most notably, the fact that it seems as though we lose about 5% of the carts at this point per year because they are, quite frankly, not the highest-quality cart of the, say, three or four primary options. This is well-known to be the lowest-quality option. That's a problem. So, who know, who knows when we're going to pay it off? Thinking, we're still aiming at four years, but if we do see a huge drop-off and let's just say we start losing 10% per year, it could be more. The other thing was, I think that staff recommended a 55-cent gallon or 55 cent per month cart fee in 2013 when this was started, and it was actually approved at 30 cents. So, we were behind the eight ball in terms of how quickly we're going to be able to pay off that loan anyway. We did move that cart fee two years ago up to 55 and we do project for it to be paid off in four years from now.
Well, lesson learned and, you know, we're not going to go back and beat that cart situation up. It is what it is moving forward. I think we can find a way to get it resolved. We shouldn't be in the cart business. Carts are a, you know, you either buy good ones because they're supposed to last 20, 30 years. We, we find a way to work it out, to get that resolved. We shouldn't be in the cart business. And we'll just move forward with that. I don't know if that answered your question, Mr., or Councilor Lehman?
No, it didn't.
All right. So, clear enough direction, enough consensus built here?
I still need to get advisement on specific points in this RFP or in that. I mean, first off, if, if I may, to Councilor Lehman's point, there is a snowbird policy. You can suspend your service if you're going to be gone for more than 30 days.
Yep.
There is an every-other-week refuse collection option that's a lower cost in the event that you need it.
And a smaller cart.
And the smaller cart. But beyond that, the alleys, I believe, are an ongoing problem. And the real solution, and I don't know if Mr. Littlehog wants to weigh in on this, but the real solution is not to do alleyway pickup anymore, or I suppose to pave alleys. But you're going to frustrate a lot of residents who now have to bring their refuse up to the front. That's regardless of what system you're using. Those alleys, every single year, cause a heck of a lot of frustration. I'd like to make note that the valet service has been an issue that pops up a lot. It's $5 a month for the, all you need to do is make sure that your cart is outside of your home and they will walk up and get it and bring it down to the end of your driveway. Republic never charged that until this year. Clearly, I think there needs to be a charge, but there are some contracts out there where there isn't a charge for valet service. I think if you don't charge for it, you're going to have everybody and their brother just opting into it, even when they don't need it. This is a big one that I think the council may want to weigh in on, which is overflow right now. And ever since the beginning of the contract, Republic has been able to charge $2.50 a bag for overflow. And it also implies, if it doesn't directly say, that if the lid doesn't close on the bin, that, or completely close on the bin, that they can charge that fee. Here again, Republic typically didn't charge that fee until about a year ago. And then, there have been a lot of frustrated people who've called me, and I think they've called at least a couple of you when their bin was maybe halfway open and they got that extra charge fee. It's well within Republic's right to do. So, that might be something that we want to consider changing in the contract to say, as long as it sits nicely on top. I don't really know how you might work that out.
Yeah, I was reading the narrative on that and whether the lid closes or it's halfway. Usually, if mine is full, I just open my lid all the way and put the extra bag, you know, it's like airspace going up. But I know what the issue is, is when the machine picks it up and if it wobbles, that bag falls to the ground and they go up and dump it. And then, there's an additional, you know, what, you know, Mr. Reynolds.
As someone who has been frustrated by this particular point, you know, for me, it wouldn't be so bad if I got a credit for when my, my bin wasn't full, then I could certainly understand being charged when it was full. But it's just my little personal heave.
So, I think, I think that, or I think staff has enough direction. I think we're talking about some important points. If, over the next week, if you want to make a little bullet list of things that you think are important and send that to Nate. I think we've talked about it, getting the city out of the customer service business, snowbird, which we already have, smaller garbage cart, which we already have. I'd like to think, be forward-thinking, more long-term, organics. The alley thing, I know, was worked on and we did move a lot of folks to the alley, or to street side years ago. And then, some sites, some areas are just almost prohibitive from having street pickup. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, that's just a point I wanted to point out. I mean, Assistant City Administrator Burkett pointed out, you know, the fixes to have all on street, that's just not physically possible to do in certain areas. My household, it's not possible and it's not possible because of the city's ordinance. I can leave my garbage can up front year-round, then it would be possible, but then it's exposed and it's visible and all these other things that the city doesn't want. I have nowhere to put it up front. I don't have a up-front garage. If I store it in the back as the city requires and then move it up front, I have a steep hill walkout and it's full and I can't get it up the hill, especially in the wintertime. Even in the summertime, when, when the can is full, trying to get up these side hills, it's bad enough with a self-propelled mower. It's just not going to happen. And I, and I'm younger. I can't imagine how the elderly would be doing this. And then, I think about areas on Third Avenue West where the city built the retaining wall, which is a six-foot drop. How are these people going to get their garbage can down and over that six-foot drop? It's, it's just not physically possible to do it in all alleys.
And I know it was worked on the last time.
Yep.
Councilor Brennan?
I would like to see about having recycling picked up once a week and what that cost would be, or having a person having that option of having it picked up once a week.
Recycling?
Yep.
Once a week, okay.
Mayor, couldn't you, couldn't that resident just call and say they'd like an extra pickup and then pay for that extra pickup?
Yeah, that à la carte is a, I think, a cost-prohibitive thing personally.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor Lehman, they don't even run, they don't even run the recycling trucks on the weeks.
During a non-week, the recycling trucks don't come in in our community for that, for that.
Well, see, and see, now we're going to price out by, if we put that in a, in a proposed contract, we are going to now price out those that only need every other week and still don't use but less than half of their container.
Right. Well, and that's what Mr. Reynolds was talking about. It, you know, this is a, you know, it's tough because there's a bunch of things we want. We want our garbage taken this, in this style, and I want it smaller. And I, I'm a family of five and I want it bigger and, and then that contractor has to bid that all into pricing and, you know, we're, it's, it's tough.
The only fix for that is to have the large container available for the family that needs the extra capacity and a smaller recycle container for the mom-and-pop 70-year-old that only use one bag a week or every other week. But then, I don't think they offer a small enough recyclable for these, for that use unless they're able to go to every other week, which it currently is for recyclables, but that's the only option.
Right. Councilor Brennan?
Aren't we looking at getting information from other haulers and not necessarily from just Republic? I mean, maybe there's other haulers that have an option that's available.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll put it in as a, a proposed alternate and won't bind anything.
Yep. All right. I think that's it. Councilor Whiting?
I was just going to say that I liked your organic idea to having that in there and I think that's coming, but other than that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor Whiting and, and Councilor Brennan, the organics is already in the contract. It was actually supposed to be started on a pilot as, in 2015. But I, so technically, we could start now. I don't think it's a good time. I think, I think that the reason why it didn't happen had something to do with staff transition, but also because Republic had a really difficult time getting their footing under them. And in my opinion, not their fault, it was just circumstances.
Oh, and I, you know, it's an educational piece. I read a big story on Columbia Heights getting it and it, it kind of grew under a pilot program and then got bigger and now it's part of their regular thing. You know, I, it's funny how garbage 50 years ago was just put everything in one container. And then, it came recycling and then it's yard waste and, you know, where it was one and then we slowly gone to, 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 you know, up to four now. And again, it's another truck, but something that's good, something that can happen over the long term, good for the environment. We have a pretty big, our neighbor, the Shakopee-Minnewak and Sioux community have a, a, a very large organics program. It could be a benefit to them and a benefit to our community, so see what that comes of. But I think we've discussed this enough, hopefully. Thank you all for your input. I, we do appreciate it. Thanks, staff. All right. Moving ahead then, 8A, which is the city bill list for our review. If there'd be no further questions on that, we would move to 8B, our liaison administration report. Councilor Lehman?
No report over the holidays, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Whiting?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilor Contreras?
No report for two, but I have to report for one. We had a, a school board meeting last night. And just again, there's more updates on the schools. So, just quickly, elementary IHD students in grades K through two will shift it into in-person learning model, five days per week onsite, starting on Monday, January 25th. And then, elementary IHD students in grades three to five will remain in distant learning until Friday, February 5th, 2021, and then they will shift it into in-person learning, the five days per week on Monday through, on Monday, February 8th, 2021. And that's it. For more information, just go to their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Brennan?
Yep, I have a couple of things. One of them's not really a report or a liaison report. I, I did go walk the track today at the community center and got signed up and it went really smooth and it was really good to get out to the community center and just go for a walk. So, I appreciate the work that the community center staff is doing. Last night was the meeting and the commission has made the decision to do a partial refund on water connection charges to those who have not received a certificate of occupancy for the years of 2019 and 20, who've paid in 2019 and 2020. So, there's more information going to be coming out on that. It's going to be approximately $311,000 refund to those businesses and multi-family apartments and then single-family homes. So, I really appreciate the work that the spec staff had done to get that information and also the city staff that helped this, helped figure out what those outstanding certificate of occupancy. I think that's it. Oh, we also signed a contract for the automated metering infrastructure for a consultant to work and come up with the process and what we want to see in, in that. And then, we also are moving along with the utility manager search when we are contracting with Baker Utility just to assist us with that process. And that's all I have.
Councilor, thank you very much. I also don't have a report. I hope everybody had a nice Christmas holiday as well as New Year's. I am refreshing our liaison appointments and that will be presented at our next meeting at the end of the, on the 19th. That'll be in your packet. Our administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just one thing on, on it tonight. Tomorrow, both our police and fire, our first responders, will be getting their first vac, vaccination. Definitely excited about getting that started here in the city. They are in Group 1A. Next, for city staff that would be coming up would be, and also SPU staff, Shakopee Public Utilities, would be critical infrastructure, those that are in charge of critical infrastructure. So, obviously, that's our public works guys and SPU's linemen. We do not know yet as to when those vaccinations for that critical piece of the infrastructure maintenance will occur, but when it does, we'll be ready. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Moving forward then to item number nine, other business. Is there any other business before this council tonight? Otherwise, we would move then to 10A, which is closed session for union negotiations. And I'd be happy if someone then would make a motion to move into closed sessions under the Minnesota statute as mentioned. Councilor Whiting? Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session under Minnesota Statute 13.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategy.
I have, I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.